I believe we have a floor. At this time, we will approve or disapprove of the minutes that were circulated to you in the district meeting of March. The motion that the minutes be approved is circulated. These were sent to all members.
All members that we had corrected addresses. I would remind you, there were about two hundred of them sending addresses on at the very last minute. And I addressed them by hand. So everyone was sent a copy of the meeting of last year and this year.
Is there favor in this session? Those in favor are the minutes that were circulated to you to say aye. Unfair enough. Motion is passed. Most will be filed as circulated.
Madam President, uh, there is an error in the time of being on the schedule for December eighth. Thank you, uh, private jury. It's four o'clock, it's late at five. Right on the front page. Under this.
It's not in the minutes though.
No, because it's on the, uh, just okay, someone was confused. From the next meeting, before.
Maybe we have a report of the attorney's room, it's late at this time. I will give you the office reports of last year. Can you hear? I'll give the fifth district report first. As you now can see, this is what we know of these files. The audit is carried on by young, God, and company. Fifth District, Georgia State Nurse Association, Land of York. We had examined the books of accounts and financial records of the Fifth District, Georgia State Nurse Association for the year ended December thirty first, nineteen sixty four. And in states of income expenditure on a cash basis of the year ended January. Our examination was made in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and according to which we approved at such steps on the accounting system of such a auditing procedure as we consider necessary against such steps. In our opinion, the accounting statement presents fairly as a natural position of the Fifth District, Georgia State Nurse Association of December thirty first, nineteen sixty four. And results of the operation on a cash basis that has played against good note for the year ended December. In conformity with generally accepted accounting principles applied on a consistent basis. Now this is done by young, God, and company. The balance sheet, December thirty first, nineteen sixty four. Cash, general from four thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and eighty cents. Nurses Convention Fund. Nurses Convention Fund Saving Account. Place of security on loan, three thousand five hundred seventy three dollars and twenty two cents. Nurses Service Fund Saving Account, thirty six dollars and seventy six cents. Office Change Fund, twenty five dollars. Total, eight thousand two hundred forty eight dollars and eighty six cents. Cash value of UX Saving Fund at cost, one thousand one hundred eighty nine dollars and fifty cents. And the cash value, when due, one thousand five hundred sixty one dollars and eighty five cents. Office furniture and fixtures, one thousand five hundred sixty nine dollars and twenty cents. Now, they have a note. And this state was prepared on a cash basis of the account. Office furniture and fixtures of David's cost would not be made for depreciation. They made a very large depreciation two years ago. So for a while, they let that take care of all the depreciation instead of taking a little off each year. The total assets, eleven thousand seven dollars and eighty cents. Line belt in nurses' expenses. Other than payroll taxes, two hundred twenty four dollars and eighty cents. Due to Georgia State Nurse Association, three thousand seven hundred thirty seven dollars and twenty five dollars. Nurses' expenses. Five, five thousand two hundred nine dollars and thirty one cents. Loans from the American Medical Foundation, a loan type, is one thousand eight hundred thirty six dollars and seventy four cents. Total line balance, eleven thousand seven dollars and forty eight cents. And as we know here, this state was prepared on a cash basis of account. Office furniture and fixtures of David's cost would not be made for depreciation. Now this is the second page of the statement. Statement of income expenditures of nurses' expenses. Year ended December thirty first, nineteen sixty four. Income due, thirty six thousand five hundred sixty two dollars and fifty cents. And there's a note, uh, with that. It says dues are recorded, the income has pointed. The dues of thirty six thousand five hundred sixty two dollars and fifty cents. Above is composed, thirty one thousand one hundred fifty one dollars and twenty five cents. As of nineteen sixty four, dues, five thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty five cents. As dues from nineteen sixty five that was collected in sixty four. As of the beginning of the year nineteen sixty four, there had here, five thousand thirty seven dollars and seventy five cents. Dues of nineteen sixty three. Here it comes. The total expense, uh, on that subscription on American Journal of Nursing, one hundred ninety five dollars and fifty cents. Miss Belain, one hundred thirty dollars and seventy one cents. Total income, thirty six thousand eight hundred eighty eight dollars and seventy one cents. Expenses, Georgia State Nurses Association, twenty five thousand three hundred and eleven dollars. Sowers, five thousand two hundred and six dollars. Flowers, one hundred and thirty four dollars and thirty cents. Win, seven hundred sixty two dollars. American Journal of Nursing Subscription, one hundred sixty five dollars and fifty cents. Telephone, five hundred nine dollars and ninety five cents. Postings, mail, Miss Belain's expense, seven hundred fifty seven dollars and twenty cents. Legal and audit, three hundred and thirty dollars. Gifts and awards, one hundred ten dollars and thirty cents. Section expense, one hundred ninety three dollars and fifty cents. This meeting's expense, six hundred thirty one dollars, seventy two cents. Privacy, nine hundred, no, complete. Nine hundred over five dollars. Power, two hundred. Insurance, seventy two dollars and twelve cents. Payroll and property tax, two hundred eighty seven dollars and eighty cents. Office supplies and expenses, one thousand five hundred, one thousand fifty dollars and thirty nine cents. Total, thirty seven thousand two hundred ninety four dollars and seventy two cents. Excess of expenses of income, four hundred and five dollars and forty six cents. Nurses' expenses, spent, December thirty first, nineteen sixty three, two thousand forty one dollars and fifty five cents. Nurses Convention Fund Saving Account, three thousand five hundred seventy three dollars and twenty two cents. Total, five thousand six hundred fourteen dollars and seventy seven cents. Place of expenses of expenses of income at the cost, four hundred five dollars and forty six cents. Balance, December thirty first, nineteen sixty four. Five thousand two hundred nine dollars and thirty one cents. This is the, this is the report. And I move that this is accepted. If there's second. Discussion. Those in favor, that accept in the audit's report, please say aye. Not caring, no emotion is passed. Report will be closed on five, as we ready to move on. The Nurses' Professional Register, I might want to read this front page because it is proclaimed as the front page of the district, and I'll say that much time. The Nurses' Professional Register, Fifth District, Georgia State Nurse Association, balance sheet, cash basis, December thirty first, nineteen sixty four. Assets, cash, one thousand five hundred ninety nine dollars and forty cents. Prepaid rent, one hundred and twenty five dollars. Furniture and fixtures, two thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars and twenty twenty cents. Total assets, four thousand one hundred sixty one dollars and sixty nine cents. Line belt in nurses' expenses, current payroll taxes, five hundred one dollars and twenty three cents. Nurses' expenses, three thousand six hundred sixty dollars and forty six cents. Total line balance, and nurses' expenses, four thousand one hundred sixty one dollars and sixty nine cents. Statement of income and expense on cash basis. Year ended December nineteenth, uh, December thirty first, nineteen sixty four. Income, professional nurses, nineteen sixty three dues was two dollars and fifty cents. Nineteen sixty four dues, sixteen thousand four hundred and ten dollars. Total, sixteen thousand four hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. None professional nurses, dues nineteen sixty three dues, seventeen fifty. Nineteen sixty four dues, five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Total, five thousand six hundred sixty seven dollars and fifty cents. Hot time nurses, professional and non-professional, nineteen sixty three, fifty five dollars and fifty cents. Nineteen sixty four dues, seven hundred ninety seven dollars and twenty five cents. Total, eight hundred fifty two dollars and seventy five cents. And bill has, seven hundred fifty four dollars and thirty six cents. Total income, twenty three thousand six hundred eighty seven dollars and eleven cents. Expenses, salaries, twenty thousand four hundred and eighty four dollars. Supplies, five hundred thirty eight dollars and sixty two cents. Telephone and telegraph, five hundred ninety eight dollars and thirty cents. Win, one thousand five hundred. Insurance, one hundred twenty five dollars. Office, three hundred and twenty five. Taxes and life insurance, eighty nine dollars and seventy four cents. Payroll taxes, eight hundred seventy six dollars and thirty nine dollars. Dues, and subscriptions, three dollars. I don't talk about dues, but subscriptions, two dollars. Postings, one hundred and sixteen dollars. Flowers, thirty nine dollars and seventy five cents. Total, twenty four thousand six hundred ninety five dollars and eight cents. Expenses, spent over income, one thousand eight dollars and sixty nine cents. Statement of nurses' expenses, spent, December thirty first, nineteen sixty three, four thousand six hundred sixty nine dollars and fifteen cents. Excess of expenses over income, one thousand eight dollars and sixty nine cents. Balance, December thirty first, nineteen sixty four, three thousand six hundred sixty dollars and seventy six cents. I move this report to the table. We heard the audit report on the Professional Registry, is there discussion? Those in favor that accept in this report, please say aye. Not caring, no emotion is passed. Thank you, Dr. Lynn. Um, Jim. I would like to move that we change the order of the day so that we might hear our speaker at five, do you? Mr. Speaker. Uh, we put it your name, Chief Mauer, Helen Mauer. Helen Mauer. Those out there who are in favor of reversing the order, um, business. Uh, and here I sit at this time, would you raise your hand? I'm concerned, none. It must come out, you have to move, but I'm certain this is a majority that approves. Because the, first business will be, uh, debated until we hear our, have our program. And the program today is, uh, to be presented by my love and I, our colleague on high school, Mrs. Miss Beverly Collins, who is our recent graduate, well, who set out to.
Today, we're most fortunate to have with us, Doctor Fred Almond. Doctor Almond, uh, is currently serving as consultant, uh, orthopedic consultant for the Fulton County Schools Athletic Teams, and also the orthopedic consultant for the University of Georgia Athletic Team. Uh, he is currently a member of the Fulton County, uh, Medical Society, the Medical Association of Georgia, the, uh, medical, uh, mer- excuse me, the American Medical Association, and the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgery. Uh, also, Doctor Almond is, uh, a very active member on the sports medicine, uh, organization. He was, uh, graduated from the Medical College of Georgia, uh, but first he attended the University of Georgia, where he played football there. Uh, he has served in the emergency reading, uh, before, I suppose, before we have any to practice, is this clear? Uh, he is active in community fairs, been very active with the boy scout. Uh, he is married with five children, and also, he is very active, uh, to his students. Also, he enjoys, uh, he enjoys the work, doing work with the campfire girl. So, uh, I can do very well, think people feel at home today, who he serves as his.
Thank you, Beverly. You see, all that activity is not still working on. I want to apologize, uh, in case I had the time confused today. Doctor Rogers called and asked if I would speak today. He had given me the time as five thirty. Then this morning, the phone began to ring, and the people said it was at four thirty. So all day long, I've been getting different times. So I tried to hit in between, and come somewhere between four thirty and five thirty. So if I disrupted your program, I'm sorry. But you know, uh, statistics have shown that three out of every five doctors are late. And I don't want to be in that three when I can help. So I tried to get in the best time. Uh, you can prove most anything you want to through statistics. I recently had the good fortune of going to Tokyo to the, uh, Olympic Games. And, uh, I was very anxious, because this is a good friend of mine, uh, that I've known through the years, who had been a participant in nineteen thirty six Olympics, go with. But, uh, we got talking about the thing, he said, how you going? And I said, well, I'm on flight, I only have time to go by boat. He said, well, I hate to fly. He said, I'm just afraid. And about this time, when we were talking about the time that they had the bomb scares, and a couple of planes blew up. This frightened me even more, so I said, well, Henry, I said, you don't have to worry about the explosions on the plane, this is very rare. He said, I don't care how rare it is, it's too common for me. So I asked one of my neighbors who worked out in Lockheed, where they had a big computer center, to run those data through and see what the chance would be of him being able to fly without being bombed aboard. So they ran a lot of data through the machine out there, and the neighbor came home, and he said, your friend will be very safe. Chance is about one in a million. So I told him, he said, well, I still got good enough heart if I'm one over one. So my friend said, well, I wanted to do the machine again. So he put some other data in there, and he came home, he said, I've got the answer. So I called my friend, said, Henry, I said, I found a way that you'll be almost completely safe going over there. I said, I talked to my friend, and he told me that if you'd carry a bomb on the plane with you, there'd be only one chance in a billion of two bombs being on the same plane. So we were able to talk into the golem. He can prove just about anything. For the past couple of years, I have been the Fifth District Chairman of GAMPAC, which as many of you know, is the Georgia Medical Political Action Committee. And one of the purposes of GAMPAC is to try to interest people in politics, people that are sincere in their beliefs about the same thing that most physicians and nurses are. Engaging physicians and people in medicine about joining GAMPAC and trying to get them active in politics. On many occasions, we run into considerable apathy. Uh, this has been very disheartening, and yet it's been something, it's been very prevalent. I'm reminded of the mother who went in and, uh, was scolding her son for doing the pooly in school. Said, Johnny, uh, your grades are awful. Says, you're just, uh, showing nothing but apathy toward your schoolwork. She looked at it, she said, Johnny, you don't have a lot of apathy means, do you? He said, no, ma'am, and I couldn't care less. And this is, this is the impression in the game from talking to some physicians and to some nurses, and to lay people about what's taking place in our country today. Now, there are certain facts, and certain situations, that lead us to believe that there are certain ailments and symptoms which are taking place in our nation today, which could be alleviated by intelligent therapy. Now, what are some of these symptoms that we have all seen in recent years? We've seen fading confidence and abilities in our individual citizens, in our local government, and in our national government. We've seen weakness developed in foreign relations based on a known women policy. We've seen a chronic tendency for deficit spending, and a head in the clouds economic attitude. For twenty eight of the past thirty four years, the federal government has spent more than it has had income. And the government spending this year will see a hundred billion dollars. We've seen the malignant growth of big governments through confrontation with personal enterprise. We've seen creeping controls and a self-propagating bureaucracy. We've seen a patriotic anemia induced by complacency, tranquilizing propaganda, and the homogenizing effects of conformity. Apathy has swept our nation, I'm afraid. Apocryty, the great physician once said, that strong maladies require strong medicine. One malady which is plaguing medicine is the slurs which are being voiced about our nation's unique system of medical care by those who something else in mind for the people of America. Some of these slurs are born in misunderstanding, and we can forgive these. Others, however, appear to be deliberately conceived to discredit our medical care system and our profession. The great essence of American medicine has been built upon strong cause. It has stood the test of time, and has kept face with changing conditions. We must not let it be disfigured now by our few who are chipping away at its very foundation. Today, medicine stands as a proud symbol of the finest achievements of our competitive enterprise sector. Our profession has helped bring this nation, the world's foremost record in medical care and progress. This has been accomplished by the efforts of the devoted numbers of the health team, who have always dogged and resisted pressure to bring this dynamic system under the deadening anesthesia that federal control would bring to this purpose. The progress of medicine in this nation is one of the most dramatic stories of the century. Four and one half million Americans are alive today, who would be dead if the mortality rate of twenty five years ago still pervades. And these four and a half million people earn almost ten and a half billion dollars each year. For the first time in our history, life expectancy for Americans has exceeded the biblical three scoring ten, and now stands at over seventy years. Eighty percent of the drugs commonly prescribed today were unknown just ten years ago. The United States has made more important drug discoveries in the last two decades than all of the rest of the world combined, or seven times as much as the next leading nation. The average stay in the hospital is at its lowest in history. In nineteen sixty one, the death of mortality rate declined to the lowest in United States history, down to twenty four point three per one thousand. In thirteen years, the nation built some seven hundred and sixty three new hospitals, increasing the total to over seven thousand. A record number of Americans are now covered by voluntary health insurance and prepaid plans. These accomplishments did not just happen. They came about because research, medical sciences, physicians, and the health team have had an opportunity to work in an atmosphere of freedom. Achievement and freedom are not unrelated. Free men have had the opportunity to develop this medical su- care system under a government and a constitution that encourages free enterprise and industry. Men have been free to think, to work, and to match their talents against the world. This progress in medicine is having an increasingly profound effect upon the life of every citizen, every business, and every institution in our country. Death rates of acute traumatic fever and influenza, about eighty five percent since nineteen forty four. Today, one out of every three cancer patients survives, whereas only one out of seven survived in nineteen thirty seven. Only forty years ago, one in every four subject to a major operation died. Today, only one in one hundred dies. And operations are performed now that were impossible only a few years ago. Today, the American people are getting more for their health care dollars than at any time in history. They spend almost as much on liquor and tobacco, and three times as much on recreation and travel as they do on their health. The American people are getting far better medical care than at any time in the history of the world. And the cost of this care is in line with the cost of other services and commodities. This medical progress has given millions a chance to live when they might have died a few years ago. And the science in medicine is constantly progressing, always reaching upwards toward the goal of a world free from fear of serious illness. As physicians, we are eagerly awaiting the day of greater cancer control, preventative of some types of heart disease, cures for multiple sclerosis, cerebral palsy, muscular dystrophy, and new inroads against other killers and privileges. This month, however, in the halls of Congress in Washington, D.C., our elected congressman will decide one of the most important questions which has faced any Congress since the inception of the Congress. This question is Medicare versus elder care. Year after year, we have seen a piece of political crackery called Medicare dying country. It's promoted and defeated by the sound judgment of the majority of the House Ways and Means Committee and by a lack of support in our national legislation. After each of these beatings, we felt that Medicare would not dare show its false face again. However, we have been wrong. It came back the following election. In nineteen sixty, solidly supported by the physicians of this country, Congress passed the Curmills Law, granting federal funds to the states to expand their medical assistance to the aged program and to develop new ones. This law made it quite possible for every state to offer to its needy elderly citizens substantial medical and hospital benefits, far in excess of the shallow benefits of the Medicare bill. With Curmills, we felt that the proponents for government medicine would no longer boon the name of Medicare into the ears of the elderly. But we were again wrong. The drumming for Medicare grew even louder, drowning out the word about Curmills. Diverting the attentions of those who need its benefits most from the fact that medicine is available to them as well as other medical benefits throughout the country due to Curmills Law. Medicare would cover only a marginally fraction of the total medical cost of someone who is really sick. It would provide only limited hospital benefits and some nursing home care, and a limited number of nursing homes. For hos- hospital outpatient, it would cover certain diagnostic tests after the patient himself has paid the first twenty dollars. That is all. That is all that there is for Medicare as it has been presented. The patient pays the entire cost of everything else. Doctors and surgical care would not be provided by Medicare. Necessary private nurses would not be provided. Drugs outside of the hospital are not provided and are even limited within the hospital. The patient pays for all of these things. That is Medicare. A bed and the signs of drun- when the bedtime runs out, so does the government. Proponents, on the other hand, for good medical care have charged that not only is Medicare a deception, but it is also a great danger. Medicare would impose federal controls upon our hospitals, adding to their costs and burdens of administration, determining admissions and discharges of patients, and setting budgetary standards that have nothing to do with sickness. We all know, you and I, who suffers the most when a budget replaces medical judgment? And of course, it's the patient. Medicare would endanger the relationship between the patient and his doctor by denying the doctor his full range of choices and treatment and also by institutionalizing that which is private. Another danger is to the various social security system itself, the economic protection for millions of Americans over sixty-five. Rising social security taxes to cover the enormous and unpredictable cost of hospitalization for millions would certainly endanger the entire system. And Medicare also poses a serious danger to our health and rapidly growing system of private voluntary insurance plans, which already cover more than sixty percent of all Americans over sixty-five, providing doctor and medical benefits if they choose, as well as hospitalization. All of these things we have cited to the American people. To support medicine's contention, King Anderson's Medicare scheme is a deception and a danger. In October of last year, the Gallup Public Opinion Poll showed a steady decline in public support for Medicare, dropping from a majority of sixty-seven percent in favor of Social Security Medicare in nineteen sixty-one, down to a minority forty-four percent during the election campaign that sent our present Congress to Washington. In analyzing the results of the election and discussing the so-called mandate now claimed by the administration, another outstanding opinion poll publisher, Samuel Lubel, made an exception of Medicare from such a mandate. He stated in a quote, "My interviews show that details of the administration's proposals are not understood and that the opposition of voters rises when they learn how limited is the assistance that would be provided and what it would cost in tax increases." On January the fourth, nineteen sixty-five, the very day that the administration rushed to the new Congress with its mandate and in the name of the people, demanded an act of Medicare as the first order of business in the new Congress, on that very day, the Gallup poll revealed that seventy-seven percent of the American public were mistaken in their understanding of what Medicare is or just did not know anything about Medicare admittedly. I will quote from this amazing finding of the Gallup poll. "Four persons in ten of forty percent are mistaken in thinking that this program would cover the fees of doctors, surgeons, and dentists. Another thirty-seven percent said they didn't know, leaving only twenty-three percent who were correct in saying the program would not pay for these services." Many people were unable to express their opinion on this question, whether the program would pay for all hospital and nursing bills. Can anyone honestly claim there's a mandate for Medicare from the American people when seventy-seven percent of these American people, three out of every four, have a tragic mistake in understanding of its provisions or honestly admit that they do not know what the provisions are? I ask you nurses today, is organized medicine wrong in urging the new members of Congress, whose votes are already being counted on, to swing in balance in favor of Medicare, in urging them first to study the reasons why medicine has helped to defeat Medicare in the past and time and time again in previous Congress? To do this before they begin their congressional careers with a vote that they will live to regret and will regret all the more because it would establish a permanent system they can never repeat, supported by a crushing tax that will continue to go up, 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 and up? Are the doctors of the United States wrong in urging Congress to give serious consideration to the measure now before them that offers genuine medical and hospital benefits to the needy aged? This is a bill which is authored neither by Republican Party nor the Democratic Party. It is a bill with bipartisan parents, the Hurlong Curtis Elder Care Bill, number thirty-two twenty-seven. If the administration can be still long enough to make this comparison, it will be found that the Hurlong Curtis Elder Care Bill can cover not only the cost of hospital care and nursing homes for the aged, but also payments for physicians, surgeons, and drug dealers, which Medicare would not. The Hurlong Curtis Elder Care Program will be financed by federal state matching fund, expanding and strengthening the established Curmills Law. This is in actuality an amendment to the existing Curmills Law. It takes into account the fact that nearly two-thirds of our elderly have already protected themselves against illness by taking our private insurance policy. Their old people do not want to become an added tax burden on their children. But Medicare would bring into existence an enormous permanent machine imposing heavy additional taxes on all working people for all the years of their working life, so that everybody, the well-off as well as the poor, the proud as well as the humble, the cheated as well as the deserving, would be taken into a compulsory governmental system. Shall the elderly, sick, and needy people of our great nation be given medical care or merely Medicare? I would like to read to you a few, few words from an article that appeared in last month's Reader's Digest. I have some reprints that I hope you will take, uh, advantage of as you get through today. Walter Judge is not only a former congressman from the state of Minnesota, but he is a physician and for many years was a, uh, missionary in China. He is a very eloquent speaker, a very fine person, and he has analyzed Medicare and elder care in a very fine fashion in this article. And I'd like for you to read it and pass it on to someone else to read if you've not already read. I won't take a lot of time with this, but I just do want to read a few words. He says, "Not only labeled as Medicare, Medicare does not permit, it compels, every wage earner to participate in the plan. The wage earner does not contribute, he is taxed. The Medicare taxes paid during the wage earner's working years do not go to pay the heavy cost of medical care in their later years. The taxes they pay today would go to pay today's beneficiaries. Tomorrow's benefits would have to be paid for by tomorrow's taxpayers. Under Medicare, the secretary or the nurse earning fifty-six hundred dollars a year would pay exactly the same tax as the executive earning fifty-six thousand dollars a year, since the tax base would be on earnings up to fifty-six hundred dollars. It is estimated that by nineteen seventy-one, the person with a fifty-six hundred dollar a year income would be paying about six hundred dollars a month social security tax." Because Medicare provides the same aid to all over sixty-five, regardless, this is six hundred dollars a year. I'm going to get too much, too many dollars for it. But still, fifty dollars a month is rather high when you own to make fifty-six hundred dollars a year. Because Medicare provides the same to all over sixty-five, whether they need it or not, it benefits to those who do need aid or wholly inadequate. Anyone who is covered by Social Security, regardless of how much money they may have, if they have a million dollars in assets, will receive exactly the same benefits under Medicare as will the elderly in there. So, I'd like for each of you to read that. Thus you see, this fashion of the age of our Congress will be faced with a big push by the administration for an act of a bill for government-controlled hospitalization for the aged under Social Security. At stake is fiscal sanity in Washington as well as another projected invasion of the private lives of the citizens by the federal government. This legislation could turn out to be the most significant and far-reaching invasion thus far. Please remember that the Medicare bill would levy a special payroll tax on the nation's wage earners and their employers and the self-employed to finance hospitalization for all the nation's elderly without regard to financial needs. Millions of senior citizens who are self-supporting and able to take care of their own needs would thus be eligible for this care at the expense of the younger generation. At the same time, all Americans over sixty-five would be blanketed in the compulsory government health program administered by the bureaucrats in Washington. There would be no local control. This would be an extravagant waste of public funds. The pattern of letting the government prescribe the tight and extent healthcare for millions of Americans would load the Social Security system with a new type of obligation that could be expanded almost without a limit. Remember, too, that under the administration's program, the duration of tax-supported care in hospitals and nursing homes would be limited by law without relation to the requirements of a particular illness. The judgment of the patient's own physician could be de-vetoed by the bureaucratic machinery. We all know that control invariably follows money when the government steps in. The quality of U.S. medical care could not help but suffer under this radical departure from the practice and tradition of medicine in the past. We must make ourselves and our friends aware that Social Security is not an insurance program. It is a tax program by which today's workers care for the non-workers. The money is spent as it comes in. Today's Social Security taxpayers are depending for their retirement upon the benefits and the willingness of future workers to continue to bear ever-increasing loads of social tax and on the ability of business to pay it straight. The Social Security program itself is an example of ever-expanding coverage to include new groups each year in order to meet the ever-increasing demands for payment. Only the most naive can believe that the program would remain limited to those over sixty-five. Next would come the drive to lower the age qualifications, especially since the taxes were being paid by the younger generation. Depression would continue until everybody was covered by complete care supported out of the federal treasury. Socialized medicine would no longer be a peril. It would be a fact. Then we could only wonder what segment of private enterprise the Washington plaintiffs could choose to nationalize next. History has shown that people must cherish their freedom of choice or lose all freedom. They have always a danger of losing freedom, especially when the bait that is in the trap makes the unsuspecting think that they can get something for nothing. The modern Cinderella approach to the health care problem for the aged fails to take into account that the fair godmothers exist only in storybooks. Certainly, the government cannot provide something for nothing because the government does not and cannot create wealth. It can only give away what it takes from its citizens by taxation. The minority pressure groups who clamor for this government's spending have learned the magic of organization. The great masses of sensible, right-thinking American people have not learned this as yet. But organization is the answer to all the ills which possess us. If it wins, and thrifty, hard-working, right-thinking majorities in America become so organized on a nationwide basis to clean up the various governments which are responsible for these wasteful spending programs, then the situation can be correct. I would like to appeal to each of you today. We have in this box up here that I'm going to leave, a little question and answer folder comparing Medicare and elder care, the reprint of Judge's article, and also a little folder which tells you the address and how to go about writing your congress. This is the month of action. Next month will be too late. By April the first, something will have been done. If it is Medicare, then medicine, as you and I have known it in this great nation, will cease to be very sharp. Now, some of you may think I'm presenting a much darker picture. But if we were to turn the lights out and have complete darkness in here, I could not compare to what this effect will have on medicine in this nation within our lifetime. Now, many of you have heard different things about socialization in England and some of the other countries, how they prosper. Just March the fourth, I touch this out of the ground, face. Just March the fourth, I touch this out of the loud face. Eighth Prominent British Surgeons, including Queen Elizabeth's physicians, charged Wednesday that a majority of British hospitals are a minister health. Now, this is not many years since medicine in Great Britain became socialized. How long before they will be writing about our hospitals stating that they are minister health rather than the need that they offer? So I would like each of you, who seriously consider this problem we're faced with today, to sit down and write a conscientious letter to Congressman Welton, to Senator Townes, and to Senator Russell. Now, I would like to caution you that Senator Wel- Congressman Welton is committed to vote for Medicare if this bill comes up. However, as this bill comes out of the committee, the Ways and Means Committee, a substitute bill will be offered, and that will be the elder care bill. And what we would like for Congressman Welton to do is to take this opportunity to vote on the substitute bill, which will be the elder care bill. And then if this does not have enough votes to pass, then some other bill, eventually, the Medicare bill will come up. So we would like to urge Congressman Welton to support the only bill which has the support of organized medicine, the elder care bill, and her own courtesy. If any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm not sure how much time we have today, so I might, I don't know whether we're over or under.
I have a question. You said that if this came up in Congress, that Representative Welton would be compelled to vote for this, is this correct? Why would-
No, if I said compelled, I didn't mean compelled.
Committed why?
He is committed to vote for this. This is, I don't know how he became so committed, but he is committed to vote for this bill. And he has told, this is the reason so many positions opposed Congressman Welton in the last place, is because he had made this stand and refused to change. And he is an intelligent young man, and he has a open, clear mind and motivation. And we hope that he will have a mind that is clear enough and open enough and enough thought given to the thing where, when given the opportunity to vote for the substitute bill, it comes out that he will vote this. And we feel that love from you people, not the physician, he knows how a physician feels. But not only should you write a law, but any of your neighbors that you can talk to should write a law, particularly your clergyman. This is very important. Congressman Welton comes from a Christian family, and they value the opinion of clergyman very highly. And I'm sure that a number of lovers from the clergy will have a whole lot to do with the way he decides to vote in the next two weeks. We don't have long. This will come out sometime around the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second of July. So this is something that is really closing in on us rapidly, and a few of us could make the difference. So far as we know, we will be within fifty votes of either passing or being defeated so far as elder care is concerned. We feel Mr. Welton will be, one of these fifty will go one way or the other. Yes?
What assurance do we have that people of Georgia will benefit from elder care if Phase Two of curmels have not been implemented yet?
Well, we have every assurance that Phase Two of curmels will be implemented. They already derive many benefits from the Phase One. You have two phases of curmels. One has already been implemented by fifty states. Some thirty-five states have implemented Phase Two. I feel certain that the state legislature would have found the money for Phase Two this year had there not been so much publicity in the press and on the radio and TV stating that it was essential Medicare would pass because Medicare would really almost eliminate curmels. The big thing here, we're giving medical care to the aged that's needed. On the one hand, it has been given to a large group through Medicare, and all of the instructions as to how this will be done is coming from Washington. Your current bills is taking some federal funds, some state funds, but the regulations, the ultimate authority resides within the state. Each state can implement as much as they want to, and they can keep it limited as much as they want to. And we feel sure that the powers that be within the state, as soon as this becomes necessary, will implement Phase Two. The legislation was very much in favor of going ahead this time, and I think if it had not been this other thing of people thinking that, matter of fact, it already has been put into the budget, not this immediate twelve months to twelve months end. So it is in there, and there's no question that they will go along with this. I believe very much.
When we have the Crofton Law, the alumni, and also the Jewish Church, all, thank you very much, specifically. Very, very much. And I would like to say, since you've had long, to try and talk to all the alumni and bring it back to all the youth, they're Christian. This is a matter that we all run with, to be able to, thank you so much for coming. Are you ready for more visits? I believe we did not hear from our executive secretary.
I will make mine very brief and tell you, we have sent out all the AMA cards and sheets in the district headboard, and yesterday we sent in a report for one hundred and fifty-two members. We are two hundred and fifteen members ahead at this time. One of the good news for you, and I'll give you quickly a breakdown on them. In the CESR Section Six, EATC Section Eighty-Two, Administrators one hundred and forty-eight with one associate, General Duty one hundred and three with two associates, Occupational Health thirty-four, Public Health eighty-five, Private Duty two hundred and forty-two with two associates, making a total of seven hundred with five associates as of today. And I have seventeen on hand that have just arrived that we will clear to the GSR and they headboard. Without taking more of your time, there are extra overbylaws, extra needles, nominations for Nurse of the Year, and Townes will help you get through. We just want to give you one reminder, but please give us your changes of addresses. We will have to have the writ pulled by the first of the year and throughout the year. Give them to us as you make your changes and cut down on restrictions. Actually, this is all just a little experience, but everything's up to date.
Thank you, Ms. President. Our secretary will at this time give a report of the board meeting that was held Tuesday night.
Did you have something to say, Chairman? I'd like to move that this assembly appoint a parliamentarian for this meeting.
For this meeting? The move is saying that a parliamentarian be provided for this meeting? Is there discussion, is one-
Well, I'd like to make the substitute motion that we do not need a parliamentarian, we do not have it.
Is a substantive substitute motion, sir? Who should send the substitute motion?
Madam President?
Yes.
All members of this should have a parliamentarian.
Is a side of discussion?
I would just like to say that it is my information that most of the work should be done by parliamentarians and the president outside of the meeting, but he is not next to him.
Other comment?
Well, how would we find a qualified parliamentarian today? How would we know who's qualified?
Madam President, I believe there are members in our association who are qualified to act as a parliamentarian without written orders.
Madam President, if they're qualified enough to act as parliamentarians and also qualified to speak up, if something should go wrong in a meeting, it's called point of order, as we perceive without one.
The question has been called. We need two sides to vote to end debate. Those in favor of ending debate on this substitute motion? Will you please stand? Ending debate on the substitute motion?
Not how that parliamentarian is acting.
That's right. I think there's a two-part, um, end debate? End debate? Now, we are ready to vote on the substitute motion. The body has voted to end debate. We will now move toward voting on the substitute motion. Which is, would you say substitute motion again?
Substitute motion is that we do not need- The substitute motion is that we do not need a parliamentarian for this meeting.
Madam Chairman, we have promised to end debate on the-
I'm not going to debate about the substitute motion. I'm going to ask Madam Chairman if the first motion that was made is not the first order.
No, no, no.
The substitute motion has been proposed to claim, oh, just for the right of the motion. Would you like to check the two motions before? At this point, I'd like to say that we must be out of this auditorium at six thirty. Well, this meeting had other reasons. I would like for this to proceed without any pause. Do you understand the motion? I move that we do not appoint a parliamentarian for this meeting. Are you ready to vote? Those in favor, would you please stand? The result of the vote just taken, ninety-six affirmative votes, twenty-nine negative votes. The motion is canceled. Substitute motion is canceled. We do not need to appoint a parliamentarian for this. At this time, we will ask our Secretary to give you a resume of the board meeting that was held Tuesday night. If you will recall in your minutes, there was a motion at the close of the meeting that business be discussed with and that matters pertaining to the business at hand on the motion from the meeting floor be considered by the executive board. Our Secretary May I vote to give you a resume of the board meeting?
Executive Board, District GSNA, meeting was held Tuesday, March the ninth, at seven thirty P.M. St. Joe's. Meeting was called to order by Chairman Mr. Garland, and we had a quorum present. A motion was made at this meeting that the necessary amendments, Articles Four and Seven, in order to confirm the GSNA bylaws be incorporated in the bylaws of the Fifth District, and that the bylaws committee be requested to study further needed amendments. Special attention being given to Articles Fifteen, Section One and Two, and Article Nineteen, Section One and Two.
Read that close, so we can check.
The motion was made that the necessary amendments, Articles Four and Seven, in order to conform the GSNA bylaws be incorporated in the bylaws of the Fifth District, and that the bylaws committee be requested to study further needed amendments. Special attention being given to Articles Fifteen, Section One and Two, and Article Nineteen, Section One and Two. It was also recommended at our Executive Board meeting at the Fifth District, Executive Board request the GSNA Executive Board to ask all the districts in the state to adopt the AMA membership application. This was the main business and that we carried out by Executive Board.
Thank you. There were no recommendations from the board to the body, and this information will be accepted as an end motion. will be accepted as an exception. We'll ask our program committee to hand the chairman to report at this time about press conference membership. Black Lives Matter is a program that is to this day has been a joint activity with three committees on the district. There's considerable work underway, and each of you, uh, will have been through. We would see some of these correspondents. Our projections are for very splendid and timeless over four tomorrow, to give you to the reverse of all the years, and four other sections. The, um, week of May twelfth, nineteen sixty-five, referred in our traditional manner, I believe it has very great potential to support, while the time immediately following this meeting, the members of the alumni, of the class, of the district, the me, and my life, for justice, and that we need to make some further plans. Thank you, Mr. President. Did you get the master? Here's, uh, some of the papers. The panelists are lying in front of our president.
We've had fifteen hundred meters and they scheduled pause, that's all.
Uh, we'll come down to consideration of our bylaws, uh, the, uh, report of the bylaws committee. For the benefit of those who are new members, and we do have new members, uh, and the benefit of those who have not been meeting with us since September, uh, I think that our bylaw chairman will give you a little rundown upon the table. There have been three, uh, copies of the proposed changes circulated to you. Before, um, she comes to give you her report, I would like to say that, um, following, uh, the meeting two months ago, uh, you remember that Mr. McCollum was here at our meeting. Uh, I was able to see him, and you have been reading the papers this week, you will know why Mr. McCollum has been late at night, working on real portions. His wife tells me that he comes home and changes his shirt and immediately goes back. So, we have been able to contact him, we've been able to talk with him. He does not in any way, um, feel this interested in our problems, so he has not been able to be here today. I do have a letter from him advising us, how you act at this meeting, or if it still wishes. Dear Miss Garland, this will acknowledge receipt of your letter of February third, nineteen sixty-five, in answer to your various questions, as contains therein, the following of my opinion. One, there is no action which was taken at the January meeting which needs to be rescinded. The proposed bylaw changes presented at that time, just did not receive the required two-thirds vote and therefore failed. This leaves you in precisely the same position as you were prior to the meeting was first held. This is the ballot of January eighth. Insofar as the bylaws which must conform to the National Association are concerned, notice of these should be given in the usual way and voted upon, either separately or together at the meeting which is specified by the notice. I believe it will also be well to spell out in the notice, and to announce definitely at the meeting that they are required by A and O, and also where applicable by the State Association. Upon motion, at the meeting involved, the proposed changes could of course be voted upon separately, or within the discretion of the chair, to be submitted separately without motion. If this were done, there would of course be no reason why changes other than those actually required could not also be committed. I trust that the information you, uh, desire. Now, with this in writing, we proceeded to announce to you in the boardroom, official notice, that consideration of the proposed bylaws will come again to this body at this time, if you so desire. If there are any technical errors, at this time, uh, to the board. We are right where we were before our January meeting.
That's right.
Uh, what do you have, please, next, floor?
Um, Miss Garland, I move that we proceed with the bylaws, right where we were before.
That's right.
Miss back. Miss is back.
Miss wants you to watch your mouth.
This is right.
Madam Chairman, I move to a point of order. Our, in light of the actions, our the executing board, and the light of the minutes of the previous meeting, the previous meeting referred all matters pertaining to the passage of the bylaws to the executive board. Am I correct in that position?
I love you. To approve that all discussions concerning the changes, or other meetings that would be affected by the vote on the proposed changes in bylaws of the Fifth District of the State Association, be suspended at this meeting, and all matters be referred to the Fifth District Executive Board for consideration.
Now, in that, I was correct that this, uh, this matter was to come before the executive board. Our secretary has read a motion which was taken by the executive board in relation to this action. Therefore, um, I believe that we would have to rescind the action of the previous meeting before we can proceed to consider the bylaws at this time since they were considered by the executive board and a decision made, and the motion was still passed, eleven five that week.
Madam Chairman, may I ask a question? Does the Assembly always have to abide by the, uh, decision of the executive board?
Yes.
I bring to you this, uh, and answer to your question. Whenever policy has been determined by the voting body of the organization, the board of directors is permitted to provide for its execution. This procedure is based on the principle that the decision of the total management takes precedence over the decision of any specific group within the association. This is in your mind.
Um, Madam Chairman, I rose to a point of order, and that is that this is necessary to rescind the actions previously taken in order to get this on the floor.
This is not the advice, this is not the advice of the President, of our, uh, page, not the chair.
Uh, and did he have, uh, is this letter, they deprived to the board meeting or since the board meeting? He did not, to my knowledge, have this information, uh, which came before the voting.
It was read at the board meeting, wasn't it, Tom?
It did, it did, they deprived to the board meeting, and his reference then after the question of rescinding it to the board would not apply to the board meeting.
My life is not.
Yes.
But, um, I didn't understand the board to say that we could not vote on the bylaws at this meeting, that was not the motion before the board.
No, that's right, you're correct.
The, the motion that was made and carried by the executive board was to the effect that the Georgia, that the Fifth District is a constituent unit of the Georgia State Nurses Association, uh, and therefore would need to conform to the bylaws of the Georgia State Nurses Association. And it was suggested in this motion, or the motion was to the effect, that the necessary changes in the bylaws, the necessary changes in the bylaws in order to bring up, uh, the Fifth District to conform to GSNA, would have to be incorporated in the Fifth District bylaws without vote, because they were voted in our convention in the, in, uh, this last year. It's the items, the Article Two articles which were mentioned, and then the motion was that all this, uh, matters pertaining to the bylaws be referred back to the bylaws committee because there are other changes in there that should be made if we're going to reconsider bylaws.
Madam President, the, as I understand it, the Georgia State Nurses Association approved the bylaws that Fifth District Bylaw Committee presented to them. It then came here for vote, and it was voted on as a whole and lost. I really can't see how we're going to gain anything by sending them back to the bylaws committee and through GSNA again. We have what GSNA has approved. It would seem to me that there's no question that the membership takes precedence over the executive board. Any executive board in any organization in the country of a certain nature, such as ours, is appointed to carry out the wishes of the membership's body. I assume, since this notice went out again in your mirror, and since such a mass of nurses, which is not usual, has come here, that they want to vote, either vote above or vote below.
Due to the last motion that was made, and the last meeting we had, we naturally expected we to come to the board. The leader came out before the, the board met, with the notice that it would be voted on again. Well, naturally, we wanted to know on the point of source, so they had to put the notice in the mirror. Knowing that the state parliamentarian had been contacted by our executive secretary, I immediately went down to the office and asked to see the state parliamentarian's response. Was told it was not in the office, it's the president's, and that I could not see it until the board meeting. We immediately have executive meeting meeting, uh, the priority section, and notified our president that we would like to have all parts brought to the board meeting, uh, from the state parliamentarian and our attorney, and read it to board meeting, and this was not drawn. I now ask for the state parliamentarian's, uh, letter to be read to us, whether.
Madam President, uh, if you can. I move that in view of the fact that the members of the executive board have had since September nineteen sixty-four to study the present bylaws of this association, and have had several opportunities to bring articles they feel needed further study on, or revisions to the board for action, but failed to do so until the board meeting on March the ninth, nineteen sixty-five, that the membership of the Fifth District be permitted to exercise this right, uh, by a vote of a majority, not to accept the board action of March the ninth, delay further study of the bylaws, and further that the membership be permitted to exercise this right to vote by majority, yes or no, unless they desire the proposed bylaws to be brought up for discussion and action at this meeting.
I thank you.
Madam Chairman, it tells me we're back to the motion to proceed with business of passing the proposed bylaws. We were discussing there, and, uh, I don't think we voted on this.
We're back to the.
We're back to the motion to proceed with the business of passing the proposed bylaws. The question was held on there, we need two thirds vote to proceed with it, to end the debate. Those in favor of ending debate on the substitute motion, I move we proceed with the business of passing the proposed bylaws, please stand. Ending debate, ending debate, you're not motion, move, uh, voting on this motion. Ending debate. End the debate. Now we are ready to vote, um, proceeding with the business of passing the proposed bylaws.
Madam Chairman, I move, may I?
Yeah, we are, we are voting to discontinue the debate on this. We are ready now to vote on whether or not to proceed with the business of passing the proposed bylaws.
Yes, that's what is concerned, that the debate is closed.
The debate is closed.
There's no debate, this is, uh, in the order.
The debate has ended, we voted to propose the debate, the debate is closed on Thursday. We proceed with the business of, uh, this way you have asked it, proposed bylaws.
What I meant is, I move that we get on with the business of, uh, voting, voting, excuse me, voting on the bylaws.
Uh, we have to, one more point I would like to mention first, if you don't mind, please.
Debate has been voted to close.
To a point of information. We needed a parliamentarian to instruct me what it is I want, but I want something, may I speak?
But now do you make up your mind what you want?
I have, I have an amendment, please.
No, you have not amended the motion.
That is not the motion I have in mind, please.
Okay, if it's not the motion, we are ready to act on this motion, I know.
There's a motion before the House.
A motion that I have.
I understand.
But they have a motion.
Madam Chairman, I.
Are you out of order, sir?
I think perhaps I wouldn't speak when I explained what I have to say.
I say that, that body has voted to move to, vote on this motion.
All right.
Would you know in favor of the substitute motion, I move that we proceed with the business of voting on the proposed bylaws. Would you please stand?
All right, count on you to go down, sit down and count.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty-nine, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty. Fifty-seven, fifty-eight, sixty-nine, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, I believe we're thirty, thirty-eight, eighty-one, eighty-two.
Vote, eight-one, eight-two.
Eight-three, eight-four, and fifty, eighty. Nine, nine-one, nine-two, nine-three, nine-four, and fifty-five, and then.
Those who are not in favor of proceeding with the business of voting on the proposed bylaws, please stand. Thank you, please, please. Ninety-nine to twenty-one, that we move, uh, that we proceed with the business of voting on the proposed bylaws. How would you like this done? Individually or collectively?
I would like to have the chairman under revision, that he present these proposed revisions and vote on them article by article and section by section. If we can vote on them as a whole.
No. We did this last time.
Yes.
Is there seconded?
I would draw the motion.
Madam Chairman, since we've had all the time to study these, I move that we vote entirely on the bylaws.
Is there seconded voting, again, seconded?
Madam President, some of us have not seen the new proposed, uh, bylaws.
I just wanted to tell them to vote in the end of the day. There was hope in our hands before the meeting. We're open for discussion, um.
Well, we don't have our history.
I'll tell them that's like, I have a quote about the word. Oh, did you? I will when they get here.
Oh. But if you are, uh, you're a vote. We have a motion that we, uh, vote again.
Ms. Scott, I'll withdraw my motion if they want to vote and eventually I'll stay the same time.
No.
All right, I move that we vote for them.
Madam President, uh, is there seconded, such a person, uh, Montoya? Uh, and she's writing a motion, would you wait till we get to the board? This is kind of arranged off to stay after six thirty. We have a motion made by Christian that we vote for the proposed bylaws collective and seconded by Frances Haines. Is everybody, you know, understand that what they motion? If you're now ready to talk to them.
Oh, I would love to vote on it as a whole and go home, I've had a hard day. But I, I wonder since by doing it this way, last time, we lost everybody and start all over. If it wouldn't, uh, maybe we could at least have some bylaws to operate on. Uh, if we took these up article by article, and I would like to offer a substitute motion that they take enough article by article wherever there's change in an article. There aren't that many changes except in three articles and there are some brand new members who got their cards last night, they want to vote but they don't have votes, so.
Madam President. We've been in the range, so we, uh, say yes, act on six, six. All right, uh, uh, those who want to adjourn, we, it's a privilege motion that takes, takes. Uh, we have a privileged motion, take press and over the substitute motion, they just come in. Those in favor of, uh, adjourn, uh, saying? Those in favor of adjourn, saying?
Can I make an announcement? I would be in favor of adjourn if we could reconsider, uh, another, uh, meeting.
All right, let's see who's in favor of adjourn. Those that want to finish the business of the day and act on the substitute motion with free standing. The motion to adjourn is lost eighty-five, twenty-six. And we have a substitute motion to take the bylaws, uh, article by article in the articles where changes are to, uh, be made. And we have one back, it's ready, seconded this motion. The way, so the way, um, this matter, uh, this way, uh, proceed. Questions being told. If there are any that is not in favor of, uh, ending the debate on this. All right, we are ready to vote on the substitute motion to take the bylaws of article by article in the articles where changes are to be made. Those in favor of this way of proceeding, please stand. Affirmative closing, uh, negative closing, please stand. Those who are in favor of doing this article by article where changes are to be made, please stand. Where changes are. The vote is seven to six, to twenty, in favor of proceeding article by article where changes are being considered. Seven to six, in favor, twenty. Come on back, girl. We'll ask Ms. Brownfield if she will present the understanding, article by article, and will vote as she can, as she has voted to do.
There were only editor changes in Article one and two, Article three, this first article, which there was a proposed change, Madam President, we've gotten proposed change in Article three.
Louder please than slower, please.
I thought it was way back.
There were no proposed changes in Articles One and Two, other than editorial. The proposed, first proposed change was in Article Three. Madam President, I move the adoption of the proposed change, Article Three, on membership.
Who said it? Who said? I propose a great change in Article Three.
This is an area of consistency with A and A's bylaws, and we added, made, made the addition of associate member to the membership rather than the way it had read and made editorial changes.
Do you understand that the proposed change? Previous question has been called. Is there anyone that wants to debate, President? These new graduates, Miss Hudson, don't like this thing.
Oh, that means, may I tell her what it is? All retired nurses may have associate membership, gives them all privileges to have voting, and if, if they get it, it has to be used. Instead of associate member, they retain their membership in the association.
It's explained in Section Five that the associates of this association shall be members to nurses who were not employed in nursing during the twelve-month period increasing their application for associate status, and who do not anticipate employment in nursing during the current calendar year. Associates shall have all the privileges of members, except voting, holding office, and serving as chairman of standing committee, as delegates or alternate at conventions, or special meetings, or serving on standing committees of this association. Associate status shall not be required if membership is preferred.
Now move the adoption of this, uh, article.
Are there any other questions? Are you ready to vote on this proposed change? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no, this person, uh, proposed change has been adopted.
The next change was in the insertion of new Article Four. This is near action in rights of members and associates. This, too, is an area of consistency with the model found on A and A, and a recommendation of the GSNA bylaws committee. Madam President, I move the adoption of Article Four, and new Article Four.
Who seconded? Is there discussion on Article Four, proposed change? In opposition to the question being called? Are you ready for the vote on this proposed change? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no, motion is carried, the change, proposed change, Article Four, uh, is adopted.
And from here on out, if you remember that all the articles have to be renumbered, and it will save me from having to repeat that, and, uh, save your time also. Article Five, there was no change. Article Six, there was no change, only the number and the deletion of the reference to alumni associations that's in consistency with the other articles. Article Seven, renumbered and editorial changes, and this is an area of consistency with Article Five in the model found, there's really no changes right. The next change comes in old Article Seven, proposed Article Eight, which has reference to due for the association. Madam President, I move the adoption of the proposed Article Eight.
Question? This is a confor-.
Conformity area.
Any opposition to ending debate? Are you ready to vote? Understand the vote. Those in favor of adopting Article Eight, on use, an area of conformity with American nurses association, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no.
The next proposed change was in old Article Eight, new Article Nine, board of directors. This is an area of consistency, and editorial changes were made. Madam President, I move the adoption of the new Article Nine, board of directors.
Ms., uh, that is wrong. Is there discussion on this change?
Uh, of course, we know that the district is the first level of membership in the A and A. No one's debating that. But I feel that, uh, our district, we have around eleven hundred members. Uh, why we should delete our board of alumni presidents. Uh, I can understand why some of these districts who have maybe sixty, or a few more, uh, in their district of nurses, where they would not have maybe a school of nurses, uh, hospital alumni association, why they would not be incorporated in the, uh, board of directors. But I think that we would retain the alumni presidents on our board.
I have a question.
Did you admit what you do? You just spoke.
That's what I'm doing, yes. Uh, sure as me to two questions.
To the proposed change.
I'm speaking to what, uh, Miss Hattie just said. Uh, I wonder if Miss Hattie could tell me how many individual members are, uh, are members of this district?
I can't hear you the membership as of today because we had so many changes of addresses and they have replaced with them. It's approximately, uh, fifty-five percent alumni members and forty-five percent, uh, individual alumni members. We don't set them according to individuals, and, uh, at this time, we do them according to sections. I will, uh, give you that information.
No, that's all right. I think you've set, you, you've answered my question, and my part is, my part is.
You've got, you've, that's last year's. See, we have, uh, seven hundred for this year, who include some of them, not last year. I told you those last year, Father, and it was printed in the meter, and I have those.
That's all right. My point is, I, I, I want to make a point, and I just simply want to ask a question first. My point is that there are as many, or just about as many, individual members that belongs to this nursing, this, this district association, as nurses who belong, or, or who trained, or were educated in these six offices. Now, I think that it would be just as right for us to have a representative on the board if they feel they must have, and the first place, I don't think it's, uh, legal, but secondly, um, I can't see why they should have their president, so their alumni's there, and we are not represented at all. I just simply want to ask.
That's right.
That's an illegal thing.
I speak against this amendment. Uh, there has been several alumni in favor of retaining their president's on because they say that's their way of channeling information back to their alumni profession. And, uh, just because A and A made the district the first level does not say that we have to eliminate from our, from our board here if we want them on. And, uh, back to the November board then, uh, there were quite a few that expressed the desire to keep their alumni president on so they have challenged the mutual back to alumni.
Madam Chairman.
We listen to new graduates.
I speak with somebody out of state, and I feel that I am absolutely represented by my section.
Uh, I would like to speak in favor of the proposed, uh, change, uh, in that concurs with A and A. I have no objection to alumni presidents being on, but when we consider our representation and consider our first, um, level of membership, it is unfair, I feel, to individual members so far, to not have the same type of representation. In considering recom- rec- um, representation, I think we might, at some future date, we can't do it now, give consideration to the sections that are very large in comparison to the sections that are very small, but at this time, I would speak in favor of the proposed change.
Uh, if I remember correctly, there was a motion brought from the five D B section in, uh, October of nineteen sixty-three, requesting that the, uh, non-local nurses of the fifth district have representation on the board. Now, that motion was taken. So, that would have given you your, uh, non-local nurses' representation on the board, and it would seem to me, since we have such a hard time getting membership, that if we would lose membership by getting rid of the president of the alumni, it would seem to me that to add one more on the board, you would benefit both.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to call question.
Madam President, I don't believe anybody has ever explained to the non-locals why they're not on the board.
I beg your pardon?
I don't believe anybody has ever really explained to the non-locals why they're not on the board.
May, may I answer that question?
Question has been called.
We have to vote, though. Has there been a second to the question yet? Those in favor of ending debate on this, please stand. Those who do not want to end debate on this question, on this time, no longer, please stand. We're ready to vote on proposed change, Article Nine, Board of Directors. Do you understand what you're voting?
Would you please say it again? Article Nine, entitled Board of Directors, has the change for editorial, renumbered, uh, recommended change in Section One, with partial consistency to the model found, Article Nine. That recommended change reads as thus. Section One shall read, "The officers and chairman of organized sections of the fifth district of the Georgia State Nurses Association shall constitute the Board of Directors of this association. The chairman and office registry committee shall be an, an ex officio member of the board without vote." This, I might point out, is the, uh, exception with the model found, that the chairman of the registry committee being an ex officio member of the board. This was a recommendation of the study committee on registry, and was therefore included in our proposed change.
Now, are you ready to vote? Those in favor of the proposed change, Board of Directors, Article Nine, please stand. Yes, those who count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five. Change, those opposed, please stand. Those opposed, please stand. Uh, this proposed change is carried, the vote is ninety-five, all the change, and twenty again.
I move that, uh, you appoint three observers to look to see how the vote is, and if it seems that it is two-thirds majority, that this be stated as two-thirds majority, if it appears that it's a very close, close count, then we could sound off in count, but in the interest of time, I think that this could be a time. The rest of time.
They only need a majority.
Well, that, you appoint some observers to determine.
All right, so you don't care about the time?
I believe that your bylaws, uh, stipulate that there must be a two-thirds majority voting on the changes of bylaws.
New Article Ten, there were only editorial changes made and deletion of references to alumni. Um, Article Eleven, old Article Nine, editorial changes and changing exactly going to be going to be directed to the editorial, sending all of those through. Article Twelve, no changes except editorial, and this is an area of consistency. Article Twelve, no change except editorial in this is an area of conformity with Article Twelve in the model form. Article Thirteen was renumbered, of course, and editorial changes with deletion of reference to the Alumni Association. The only change being in Section Two to omit the July meeting, and this was in line with recommendations from this body and the Board of Directors, which, Madam President, we want to vote on the omission of the July meeting. I move the adoption of the change in Article Thirteen, new Article Thirteen, which omits the July meeting in Section Two and in Section Four, and the change in the order of business upon recommendation of the Board and the State Committee on Bylaws. Madam President, I move the adoption of proposed changes in Article Thirteen.
Is the discussion of these two changes? That we delete the July meeting? And that the order of business be changed? Any discussion? Are you ready to vote on this proposed change? Those in favor, please stand. This vote it doesn't look like two-thirds of you are opposed. Those opposed to these two changes, please stand. No opposition?
Article Thirteen. Article Fourteen was still only editorial changes and renumbering. And Article Fifteen, there was no change from Section One to Section Nine, but Section Ten was changed upon recommendations of the study committee of the registry accepted by the GSMA bylaws committee. And Madam President, I move the adoption of the proposed Article Fifteen, and specifically Section Ten, where we made a change of reference to the committee on registry.